All right, will there be anybody in the audience doing public comment? You got five minutes to sign up.
Five minutes, five minutes, you want to speak?
Yes, yes, sir. Are you going to speak, sir?
Yes, yes, sir.
Put your name on the table.
Yes, sir.
Five minutes.
I didn't see that outside. I'll be good. I'll be deep as hell.
Is it anybody else that would like to speak? You got a minute. Just sign off.
I don't know, just ask. Say it's work. As long as it's broadcast.
Good afternoon, uh, welcome to the, uh, October sixth, two thousand twenty-five Wayzoo Borough Town Council Meeting. I'd like to thank each and every one of you for being here this afternoon. Uh, first order of business, we need a motion to amend the agenda to add a budgetary amendment.
I make the...
Oh, you need a pardon me. Ms., uh, Bennett, give us your location, please. Charge that.
Father, this is your Sunday day, we come to take you to God, we give you your honor. Father, we come to thank you, Lord, for another day that we have seen that we have not seen before. Now, Father, we actually, to be in this hour of meeting of today, God, we ask, God, that you put us all on our own, oh, God. Let it be peaceful, God, and that we do things that will be decent and in order. We give you glory and we give honor, and it's just a prayer, we pray, amen.
Amen. Sorry about that, Father. Now, I need a motion to amend the agenda to add a budgetary amendment.
I make more than a minute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So that motion passed. Next on the agenda, uh, we have a, um, some consent agendas, uh, need approval of minutes from the September eighth, two thousand five meeting.
I make what with the minutes we approve?
I say.
All in favor?
We do the consent agenda all this one, uh, all at one time. So, the only thing that I'm gonna add or ask is why are we approving the street closure, uh, before we have a Christmas parade committee presentation? I would rather have one before the other. I think that that makes more sense, uh, procedurally, and that's the only, that's the only issue I see with the, uh, agenda now. I'd like to know a little bit more about the parade before we issue a decree to, uh, close the street.
Yeah, we can move that into after the Christmas, after the committee does their, um, presentation.
Are they here today?
Yes.
So we need a motion to amend the agenda to do that, correct? Yes. Okay, I'll make that motion.
I will second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. So, then we need to find a place to put the, uh, approval for the street, uh, closure after the Christmas parade committee presentation. So you wanna make it seven B or eight, uh, nine E?
We can make it seven B.
Seven B? Okay. There we go. So I make a motion that we amend the agenda to include the approval for the street closure to item seven B.
All in favor?
Aye.
Back to Mr. Long.
Absolutely. So we still have a motion on the table to commit to approve the consent agenda as amended, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll make the, uh, you made the motion, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So when the public comments next? All right, who, who got on the...
All right, first we have, um, Ms. Tasha Coleman.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely, appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sure everybody can hear me. Um, my name is Tasha Coleman, and I am here on behalf of the Caraway Foundation. Um, this month is observed for pregnancy and infant loss awareness month. I know everybody knows about breast cancer awareness, but nobody speaks of or acknowledges pregnancy infant loss awareness. Um, unfortunately, I suffer two pregnancy losses myself, so it's, this is a call that is near and dear to my heart. So every year, uh, for like the past four years, I always put a pink and blue ribbons down Green Street to acknowledge and to honor all the angel babies that's going on too soon. And the town, um, also assists me in putting up pink and blue lights on the square on the rampart clock. So I don't know if anybody has ever seen those pink and blue ribbons? If you have, show of hands, if you've seen those ribbons and if you've seen, uh, the pink and blue lights? So a lot of people don't know, they ask questions. What are those ribbons for or what are those lights for? So if anybody asks you that question, you know, please, um, you know, spread the word and put it out there, and always just remember those families who have suffered baby loss. So, um, this past Saturday, which was October fourth, uh, we had our annual pregnancy and infant loss awareness, um, program, uh, where we invited, um, the adult family members to come, the mothers, fathers, grandparents, so forth and so on to come, and share their stories of how pregnancy loss has affected them and their families. Um, last year, we had the children's, um, edition where we catered to the children, um, because we always forget about the children who are expecting their brothers and sisters to come home, and they don't come home, and the mom and the dad, they really don't have an explanation as to why, because they are going through this grieving process themselves. So we just want to let the entire family know, you're not alone, we here for you. Um, and there are some supports here in the county. Um, there is a local grief support group here in the county, uh, which is the Compassionate Friends. Um, a lot of folks don't know about this support group even though it's advertised in the newspaper. Um, and we meet at the church behind DSS, um, the first Thursday of each month at seven o'clock. So that support program is geared towards anyone who has suffered a loss. Um, when I was going through my loss, I didn't know anything about that support group until it was introduced to me, and that support group was my saving grace. Um, if it would not have been for that support group, I probably would not be standing here today, and that's the understatement. So a lot of people, they suffer in silence, so I just ask that the county, um, recognize pregnancy and infant loss awareness month, and just, you know, be aware, and if someone or myself comes to one of you all asking for a donation or something to help this cause, please think about it real hard, 'cause I'm sure you've got a family member that has suffered from baby loss.
Ms. Tasha, tell me, tell me your first path, is that what you're saying?
Yes, right behind DSS.
And when is that at seven?
First Thursday.
First Thursday.
First Thursday of each month at seven.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Randy Collins.
I'm sorry?
It's already been brought up.
Yeah, so this is a, yeah, so this is a public meeting, um, we can't private post, um, videotape, but it is on YouTube.
Hello, everyone, uh, Randy Collins with the Anson Economic Development Corporation, uh, extending an invitation to council members and members of the public to the grand opening for the Seven Eleven project that is now completed. Uh, it'll be Friday, the tenth, at eleven AM. They haven't really told me what, what, what they're gonna do. They're gonna cut a ribbon in whatever Seven Eleven corporate does, but, uh, wanted to extend a personal invite to all of you. Um, uh, did some posting on Facebook, and some people in the community asked, you know, what's the big deal about a new gas station? This is a ten million dollar project.
Amen.
I will repeat, ten million dollars, the land alone was over a million dollars. Um, company, Seven Eleven Corporation's one of the biggest, the biggest store companies in the, in the world. Uh, they will employ thirty people at that place, both part-time and full-time. If you haven't been there, I grew up in DC, worked in DC, spent a lot of time in Seven Eleven. Um, it's really a first-class operation. Uh, eighteen, sixteen pumps for gas, five for diesel in the back. They reported to me yesterday that diesel fuel sales are, are very strong, but obviously you know about the truck traffic that comes through Anson County every day. Uh, they can get in and out of that property much safer. So, um, we, uh, we want to extend our thanks to Seven Eleven, thanks to the town for all their support. Mr. Ross and I have met on this project and other projects that are working in Wayzoo Borough. But, uh, we think it's a great thing for Wayzoo Borough, creating jobs, that's what it's all about.
Yes.
But there will be some good tax revenue to the town.
Yes.
So I know that's a good thing, and to the county as well. So, uh, we appreciate it and hope, if you can be there and join us at eleven o'clock on Friday, we'd love to have you. If not, uh, you can go by and get a selfie or a coffee.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate y'all, thank you, sir.
Um, and last we have Mr. Emmanuel Powell.
Emmanuel.
Father, I'm Emmanuel Powell. I was here last month complaining about my neighbor's noise and all. Uh, I've been everywhere looking around, uh, uh, they run a generator and they part it from one time in the morning to about five in the morning. At the same time, they use the restroom, I don't know, they, they don't have running water or nothing. What else can they do? So, uh, you know, I'm just here to complain again. I know there's somebody somewhere that can help me out with this. This, this kinda affect my family. I mean, we, we don't get no rest, you know, and loud music, don't suppose be no loud music like that. Nobody can help me. I'm like, well, I'll keep coming, Jesus. Uh, thank you.
What's your address? Sir, what's your address?
Say that again?
What's your address?
Uh, twelve Graham Street.
Is that not a public nuisance? Is that not violating the open ways ordinance? Didn't we have this discussion last month?
Chief Spencer. Chief Spencer.
Did you, uh, did you address this matter four seasons? I think we are, already have, made some progress on that, but...
Absolutely. Have, I mean, have you called back nine-one-one again after the incident we had?
They threw some, uh, towels that they were cleaning, just threw them over there, just disrespect. You know, I'm, I'm like, why? So I called again.
Have you called nine-one-one? You said you had a loud music call? Have we went there to answer calls? Have we been there to answer calls again?
Uh...
I answered the last one, this is the last arrest and everything we made there.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
I just, they just threw that over there and I called them.
Okay.
That was it.
Yeah, anytime you, no complaints, okay, call, but there's, um, uh, no ordinance, and we can take care of it, these, if they outside. Um, so they moved back into the house, we'll talk to, the guy that owned the house, um, and, um, he's advising us that he was in the midst of a lawsuit with some other property, so that's one thing going on with the property. So we still looking into it, but do not hesitate. You have my number, you call.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next we have a, uh, Christmas parade committee presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Um, so it was brought to my attention that we were not going to have a Christmas parade this year, and I was spearheaded. And so, um, the way I approached it is, I got a committee together, and I reached out to business owners and community leaders out throughout all of this, not just Wayzoo Borough. And so the group that I put together is Ms. Tina Caraway, uh, Leanie Lous, who was here tonight, uh, Ms. Marlene Richardson, Leon Gatewood, and Carly Look. And we've already had our first meeting, uh, we plan to still have it on December fourth, which we're already scheduled to do so. And the schools are scheduled to, uh, release early on that day since that is what they were probably scheduled for. Um, we plan to use the same parade route, there will be no deviation from the parade route. Um, we have contacted a company, um, that normally, uh, provides the floats for the parade, and this company was purchased by someone else, but they still provide the floats, and he is available for December fourth, so anybody who is wanting to float, uh, will have that information on flyer as well as the application for the parade. And so, um, entries for the parade will be free this year, there will be no fees to enter at all. Uh, that's pretty much where we are on the board, if you have anything else to add.
Anybody got any questions for, um, Ms., uh, Garrett?
They're timing up the parade.
Um, we're thinking, um, about doing a nighttime parade, so the, the time will be between five-thirty and six. We haven't narrowed that down yet.
All right.
We, we have talked to, um, Dan Whitlock and Lysia, they do a nighttime parade, it's light up. We have actually done one in, uh, Wayzoo Borough before, and it was beautiful, and I think, you know, it's gonna be something spectacular this year.
Should do, um, I don't have a problem with being a night, uh, that's, that's right. Uh, vendors, you gonna have vendors or just...
We will have vendors, and there will be a fee associated with vendors as well as sponsorships. Uh, we have not, uh, narrowed down the fee yet, we meet again, uh, in a couple of weeks, and we'll have everything followed up.
I know you were talking about the floats, now, some people use their trucks or they use their own truck, that's a consideration?
And they can still do that, and there will still be no fee.
I know those, those...
No fees for the floats, no fee for the vehicles.
Floats, uh, floats, you have a truck, so you get on it?
Well, they will incur a fee in person at the float. But to enter the parade, there will be no fee.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, uh, she said, uh, we will, there'll be three hundred dollars for sponsorships and twenty-five for vendors.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted.
And that'd be the only, only people that are paying to participate, because, you know, the vendors will make the money, so it's not hard to charge them.
Twenty-five dollar membership fee?
And where do the sponsorships go? Who are those made out to? What organization?
To the end of the town of Wayzoo.
Any other question? Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so at this time, still gonna need a motion to approve the parade route?
I think just the, uh, parade route, uh, the street closure, we have to do that before NC DOT will approve it, and it has to be sixty days, I believe, before somebody will give you some grace to do it. Uh, so, two months exactly out, so I'll make the motion for you.
I'll say it.
All in favor? All right, so that'll pass, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is old business, we need to discuss, uh, Oak Hill apartment safety concerns.
Yeah, Mayor and members of council, uh, uh, Chief, uh, Spencer contracted, uh, Oak Hill, they have new management, and they put together a meeting, and, um, I was, um, called by Chief Spencer to attend, and then I think I asked, um, I asked the mayor, he couldn't attend, then I called the mayor to attend, and then he, I said he wanted to be involved, and, and then, um, uh, we, we met with, um, the new management, uh, there, and, um, they are, uh, very much engaged. We have citizens there as well, um, and they are, you know, basically just tired of, of what's going on. Even the folks, I mean, a lot of the citizens that live there were out. They have like eight or nine folks that show up. Um, so you have in your package just some of the notes from the minute, I mean, from the minute, and, um, just some things we discussed and what's the next steps are gonna be. Um, so, um, as you know, we've had a homicide there, uh, in summertime, and lay-in loss of life, uh, which is very tragic, and so this has been an ongoing issue in Oak Hill. Um, so it's, it's time that we get everybody involved to eradicate this behavior. And they talked about, um, several things, putting up fencing, um, even a new security company, um, just things to, to some measures in place to stop what's going on there. And it has been going on there for, for years, but that's not an excuse. Uh, we're here now, we're the administration, so we're responsible, right? Um, so we want to do something about it. All right, so I invite all of you to get involved. Um, uh, one death is one to many, right? So, um, that's what the meeting was about, reproductive. Chief, you wanna elaborate a little bit you can?
May I ask a question? How did we vet the attendees to this meeting? I didn't know anything about it, and I don't know anybody, anybody else on this council was invited, and I'd like to know. You were, you were, we weren't. So we're in the dark, so how did you vet these people?
Sir, I didn't vet anybody, sir.
How, who offered the invitation?
The, the police chief is the one who, um, made the meeting, it wasn't me. So, and what y'all, I've gotta understand as well, is when you're talking about public official, like officials, you can't have more than two folks at a meeting, it'll be considered a public meeting. So, so that's why I put the notes...
That's why I put the notes in, in, in the meeting notes here today, so you can see what happened, right?
Uh, but we also wanna add too that we've had several meetings about this great issue, Oak Hill. Um, the new rural project had several meetings at Smithville Home, where we invited all of the, uh, council members to show up, right? And everybody showed up except for one, right? So, um, yeah, yeah, we, we certainly want to make sure that everybody's involved, uh, when it comes to Oak Hill, okay? Um, so it wasn't to exclude anybody, uh, I didn't set the meeting up, Chief Spencer did, um, and he invited me, and I came, right? So, uh, just wanted to ask my question.
I think can't you put out a notice? You can put out a notice that a quorum may be present, but no action will be taken. I think that is our, uh, definitely not there to say that we can be there, but we're not taking any official action. Is that right, Mr. Baker?
It, it is, you're probably noticing the meeting, a lot of people know that nothing, in terms of decisions are gonna be made in here.
So future guidance for council employees and, uh, is that if we're going to do something like this, invite everybody and put the notice out there that a quorum may be present, but no action, official action will be taken. So, no, thank you.
And, and the problem, though, that makes me, um, when Mr. Spencer, um, asked me, it kind of, to me, was kind of last minute, I have a problem with everybody going or somebody being invited. Um, the goal was to obtain some objectives to correct the issue up there. And, uh, I apologize to anyone that felt left off, but that was not their intent, but, uh, they were planning to have another meeting at another area, and we would like for everyone to come, um, the more people we got to be involved, the better off it will be, I assure you. Um, I probably, I thought everybody was gonna be there, but don't, don't, when we have a tough meeting, make sure we all, or whoever, I have no problem.
So I need to contact the council whenever I decide to have a meeting?
If you could let me know, I'll let them know, I don't care, as long as you don't know.
Okay, I didn't know I had to contact the council. We was in the meeting, we was, the last meeting we made, the council was concerned about what was going on in Oak Hill.
So you had a meeting?
That's why, uh, everybody was concerned of what are we doing as, as, as an agency, or what we doing? I contacted Mr. Ross and told him that what we were planning on doing, and trying to help the issues that was going on at Oak Hill. Um, but if I should have contacted you all, my apologies, I mean, I, I just felt like I assumed, and you know what assuming is? So I assumed everybody would keep the message, and I, I didn't call you personally, and I apologize for that. But it was a real productive meeting, um, 'cause it's a concern that the council had about ownership. I mean, I even heard from the council saying about the nuisance abatement, and we didn't wanna go to that point, a nuisance abatement, because you got to understand, the first thing that Oak Hill and the people that own that property, the first thing that's gonna come out their mouth is what is Wayzoo doing? And then with all the publicity and stuff, the negative and stuff about the town of Wayzoo, you know, if I was start a nuisance abatement right now, first thing I would do would have a room full of, uh, um, lawyers there. You know, a room full of lawyers saying, what are you doing? It's already crime there, it didn't crime this start when I bought the building, so you got to think about all of that. So we taking steps, there will be other meeting, we will be talking to some more people over there, and like I said, it was very productive, very productive. I mean, we got a flock camera system on one-on-nine. I personally, before I retired, the first time, contacted Oak Hill and say, you need to tie into the flock camera system. Well, they didn't do it, their ownership, the owner or whatever didn't do it. Um, you know, they got district managers, and then they got the person that owned the property, then you got someone that lives out in, what we say, Mr. Ross, they live in New York?
Um, I think somewhere up in the East Coast somewhere, yes.
Yeah, they lived in New, uh, uh, you know, on the East Coast, so yes, it is productive. My concern is, and like we explained that day, we go to a young lady that lost her life, you know, we didn't hear much about it. But the young lady, the lady that lost her life in Charlotte, we got Congress and Senate and everybody believing, one life is just as good as everybody's life. So that's what we working for. Thank you, so, thank you, I mean, thank you.
Would it be for not just Oak Hill, it would be for the community?
Yes, ma'am. I also have made contact with Mr. Betty Huntley, with, with Betty Huntley. We use that as an example. Because Betty Huntley does a lot of way with the police department. That's what we trying to get Oak Hill to do, you know, contact. This private security company they got, I met with them and, no, uh, that's not good. Um, not talking negative about them, but they got to put a little motif in what they doing. Mr. Ross sat there and explained to them about the lease that they have. You know, if you have some issues that, um, um, the housing sector, crime involved, you getting out of there. They getting you out of there.
That's exactly right.
So that's what we trying to do with Oak Hill. So it was very productive.
Marvin and Betty don't play. Close to that stuff.
The new management there was, um, very engaging. Uh, we did get some ideas. But, um, we welcome anyone who wants to get involved, uh, to come and help us with this. Um, she is, um, she has some, some experience,
Yes.
working in some very challenging properties. So we're looking forward to working with her.
Right.
Her name is Ms. Davis.
Thank you. So next on the agenda, we have new business, uh, points A, B, C, and D, discussing, consider approval of resolution, approve any new C D B G compliance plan ordinances uh, for C D B G infrastructure projects. Discussing, consider approval for authorization to write and off uncollectible account receivable. Approval of authorizing resolution to update bank and financial institution accounts. Signatory authorization, approval of resolution designating Jacob Huber as finance officer and Ashley Little as deputy finance officer.
So we need to go through these one by one?
That's right. So let's start with A. Nine A, uh, will be a resolution to approve the, uh, C D B G compliance ordinances. This is for the, uh, uh, collection system rehabilitation grant for nine point five million dollars. Um, we need this, um, in our minutes, um, to be approved.
I make a motion to approve. I say.
All in favor?
Thank you for the work on that. It's much needed and it's very thorough.
Yeah, and just to, to talk real quick about that, um, folks, uh, here in Wade's Row, we have some challenges related to our infrastructure. Um, our water and sewer system, uh, is very challenging. We are doing our best to, to a- address that. Um, nine B, uh, Ms. Mason will discuss, uh, nine B.
Good evening, council. Um, I am requesting the town to authorize, um, us to write off two hundred forty-seven thousand seventy-eight dollars and ninety-five cents in uncollectible accounts receivable. This action is necessary to ensure the town's financial records accurately reflect receivables that remain uncollectible. The finance department's review of the water sewer receivables identifies several categories. This took place during our audit when the auditor was in the, um, office. So we have accounts that are greater than seven years old. Some of them date back to twenty thirteen that we're not gonna collect them. Of those older accounts, fourteen hundred and four, of those fourteen hundred and four accounts, only a hundred and seventy-five of them were placed in debt set-off. All of the others never were placed in debt set-off. Um, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for those that are older than twenty thirteen. And of the balance, a hundred and thirteen thousand, some of them are in debt set-off. So, and then we can't put in accounts that are older than three years old. So I want you to know that the, the, the information is gonna remain in our computer. So if Mr. Ross was here fifteen years ago and didn't pay his bill and he comes back to Wade's Row, his name is gonna remain in our records. It's gonna show that we wrote off his debt. Um, and when we did it, but he still cannot get water until we pay some.
Same.
Okay. It'll be posted in a different fashion than if we left this on the books, but this is something that is long overdue.
And this date back to when?
Excuse me?
How far this date back?
That's twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen?
Yes, sir.
And we just now rectifying or figuring this out?
Then you've been here a year. I mean, this happens to every-
I've been here a year.
This happens in every, every, uh, uh, municipality. It, it's, it's not anything uncommon. It's just cleaning up the books to make the audit look better. When people come back in, they have to pay the fine. And if they don't come back, well, guess what? They don't pay it.
So the other accounts that we have are small accounts, three hundred and fifty-nine accounts of less than fifty dollars. We are not allowed to put into debt set-off accounts less than fifty dollars and older than three years old. And then we have, um, four hundred and ninety-one accounts that are less than seven years old. I didn't wanna write off everything that was greater than three years, um. Four hundred and ninety-one of those accounts, we have four hundred and ninety-one accounts of less than seven years old. Of these, I recommend, um, I've spoken to our new finance director. I recommend that staff begin submitting two hundred and five accounts, that's all we're gonna be allowed to do, to debt set-off and make a final collection efforts on the remaining two hundred and eighty-six, which are ineligible to debt set-off. That's a total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So this will ensure compliance with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. It presents a more accurate picture of our receivable assets. It will allow staff to focus collection efforts on accounts with a higher recovery potential. This write-off is strictly an accounting adjustment and does not forgive the debt. All accounts will remain documented in the system as I stated. So we are asking that you approve that.
We need a motion.
All right, I make that motion. Are we still online?
Test your one, two.
No, yeah.
This is not working.
Yeah, put the button.
Thank you, God. Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
We got a second, second? All in favor? Okay, so that's approved. Uh, next is seek approval of, uh, authorizing resolution to update bank and financial institution accounts, signatory authorization? Need a motion for that?
Some knew that's just changing it, God, right?
Sir. All in favor? So that's approved as well. Last is approval of resolution designating Jacob Huber as finance officer and Ashley Little as deputy finance officer.
So Jacob is a graduate of Wingate. He has a bachelor's degree in finance. He is currently working on his master's in business administration at Wingate. He worked for the town, well, not for the town, but for our auditor for two years auditing Wade's Row's financial records. So he has indirect experience with the town of Wade's Row. He, um, has just left Stanley County Schools after just shy of a little of two years working for them, working as the assistant finance officer. So I think, um, Jacob is gonna be a great asset to the town. Um, he's already getting it. After just a couple of days, so.
Good deal. You need a motion? I make the motion.
We do need a motion.
So move.
All in favor? All right, so that's approved. Welcome aboard, sir. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we got, uh, town staffer, sports, uh, assistant fire chief David Hamlin.
I'm meeting the council tonight. I just got a few things to speak on. I have to keep on. Uh, this week is five division week. I'm meeting at the, we're head start today in the White Store Room. Um, tomorrow and Wednesday, we're at elementary and primary schools, talking to kids, um, and daycares the rest of the week. I do want to invite y'all, among our citizens here at night, to meet in safety day. It's Saturday, October the eleventh, from ten to two at Anson Station beside Burgers. Um, we've been doing this last couple of years. Um, various safety organizations are here, who want to come help us. Um, fire truck display, bouncy houses, um, come get you a free hot dog for lunch, um, car seat checks, just stuff like that. That's all I got for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Be careful of those bouncy houses.
Don't arrive there giving a piece of them.
Uh, next we have, uh, general police chief, uh, Mr. Spencer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
That's, um, not much to have, uh, just want you to know within, seeing a lot of praises. Um, for people that walked in the morning, I did not know we had that many people to get out of the morning, but the calls I've been getting has been nothing but praises. Four, five o'clock in the morning, they send officers out at the park, which they really, you know, really, uh, appreciate what we doing and what we, what we have accomplished. Um, I see I D and crime team have made numerous felony arrests, clearing out some very important cases for the month of September. I mean, they made a lot, uh, felony cases and saw they were one of them. We do have one that we looking for, the suspects. Um, and anybody that crime is, is just too many. But I just want to go ahead and tell you all, according to the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation, our bottom crimes in, in, uh, April of twenty twenty-five was a total of fifty-three. But now, the bottom crimes in July of twenty twenty-five, we dropped down to thirty-four. Which, which, you know, I pray to the officers, what they doing. Um, that's a drop of thirty-six percent. Just hope we can continue to work on that, uh, that. And that's a dedication to the men and women that we got working. Um, Sergeant Nolan has stepped up. We have got some great detectives. We've been blessed with some great detectives. Um, actually, our detective divisions fully staffed at this time. I'm just amazed of what they've done a couple of days right before I got out working. But then we come back in, we had a crime where this lady, several, several people's credit card was stolen.
One, one person, like seven, seven days.
Okay, okay. One person's credit card stolen and then, but by the end of the day, I think they got it up there, they spent over four thousand dollars on their credit card. By the end of the day, these three detectives had seven people ready to be arrested. They made a couple arrests over the weekend and they made about three or four today. So hats off to the detective teams. Also, I had another report, okay? Um, myself, uh, along with Sergeant Nolan, Mr. Ross and Miss, Mrs. Snuggins, and he said earlier, you know, we made Oak Hill productive meeting. We're planning on having a meet several more times. Definitely gonna make sure y'all are invited. We're gonna, um, we also included in the apartment building managers. Um, so we, actually, we have people actually sitting at Oak Hill now in the lower areas that way. So that, that's having out on a lot, a lot of stuff that we doing. Um, Corbin Elderson, I don't know if y'all met all of these, uh, officers, um, but I'm definitely gonna get around to you and get introduced to all of them. And Chief Chute has been working together with the government highway safety, uh, program, which was a big thing when I was the chief last, uh, uh, doing a lot of stuff with track, because, you know, we did, we have got a lot of complaints about tracks, Morgan Road, seventy-four. Um, so these two guys have stepped up and contacted the government highway safety. And then with the government highway safety, as of October first, we were able to order eight thousand dollars worth of, um, equipment, no cost to the county. This is, this is a horn system that they worked on. So that's a great thing, eight thousand dollars that they raised. I mean, for the equipment that we gonna, um, have. Um, Councilman, um, Bennett, on Sep- on September twenty-seventh, the Wade Police Department, we gave away about seventy some coats.
Yeah.
And we, um, gave about two hundred hot dogs. We had a coat drive away from the elementary school. It was a great turnout. Touch my heart, because I don't think everybody knows the issues that we're having in Wade's Row. There's a lot of things people talking about. We got the, the, uh, election going on. But it's a lot of things deeper that we need to start focusing on. You'll be surprised at people that is hungry, kids that is hungry.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, and homeless.
That's right.
I did not know that that many people in council, and you was there too. You seen the, we, me, you talked about it. If you would see some of the kids that the way they ate that day and going on, I talked to some teachers and the principal. They started a program where they started a program that we definitely gonna get involved in, and a lot of you ought to get involved in. On Fridays, they'll have, they would give out food for kids to take home. Now, you know, a lot of things are being cut, so you can imagine food's gonna be cut for a lot of these kids that go home on the weekends and not having food. Um, I think y'all had a program where y'all have food on Fridays, but kids-
We sent home, we sent home bat cats.
That's right. That's right. So the, the Wade Police Department is gonna start collecting stuff from them officers to bring in, because I know how many time my wife go them buy them snacks, but I shouldn't have a home.
Amen.
You know who sent, uh, bags home from our church on Thursdays?
Yes, so that's something else that we really need to start focusing on, homeless and, and the kids that's, that's here. Uh, matter of fact, um, I got a phone call this morning from the mayor, um, with the issue that we had stopped at park. And the lady, they have insurance on the park and she's living at Anson Inn and we damn it, she can't pay them money at the Anson Inn. She sleeps in her car.
No.
So if we'd have told that car, she wouldn't have been able to sleep.
Right.
You know, so I'm not telling nobody to break the law. We closed our eyes and left after we wrote the citation. Um, but that's all, that's all I have. Uh, if any questions, you got y'all have for me?
I wanna, um, thank you again, uh, about Officer Ivy.
Oh, yes.
Um, mental illness is real, it's a real, uh, touching situation in this county. And a lot of us don't talk about mental illness because it, we think it's embarrassing. But I might witness, a young officer just came aboard, Officer Ivy. And I, I watched him and witnessed him, how he come down and was able to come down to suck up the woman that was in, you know, question. She didn't feel comfortable with the E M bed, so we somehow talked to her, got her to come down and he agreed to go with her. I never seen an oldest officer get rid of, don't get in there, go actually get into ambulance and ride. And he didn't care about the time, he didn't care. He was just patient and I just watched him. And I told him, thank you, but that wasn't enough for me. I just want them to know that we really appreciate them, but when you come in contact with these people, they got a real lot of issues. I mean, it's just like, you know, they, they may be smiling, but two, we don't know what they're going through. So we have to be mindful how we approach and how we care, because they're all our sisters and brothers, so. Get my hat off, E M, Herbert Fisher, everybody touch me.
Oh, yes, he, he came back with the head, that's right. Well, we've, we've been blessed. We have really truly been blessed with the Wade Police Department to get where it's at. We have been blessed with God's, God's experience. Like I said, it takes experience to be able to deal with mental health patients. It takes training to be able to deal with mental health patients.
And I just wanna thank you for what you, for the police officers coming out and helping us with the coat thing, because it was a great process. And I just, I, I just watched the way he interact with the children.
Yes.
You know, how they interact and then just jumped in, just did everything that we need to have done. Even buffalo claw right from down.
Yeah, yes, I, I see they're doing that.
I appreciate that.
And also, I did miss out on Sergeant Nolan, but we had an investigator with twenty-one years of law was an experience. Twenty-one years of investigative experience. I mean, he was one of the- I mean, he was one of the guys that got out here and worked around the clock. They not working on cases nine to five, they work whatever case. That's our vision, that's the vision that I see, that's the vision that Sergeant Nolan see, that, I mean, it's about the community. It is about the community, we deserve to break the public. So, with every, everything that you all, if I come crime team, please don't take that we've been, we've been, because you have been more than helpful with us, Mr. Ross. You have, we, you have went through a lot of things together, but at the same time, we see the same thing. It's about our community, and we definitely got to continue to work toward that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Keep up the good work.
When Chief, whenever you want to do that food drive.
Yes.
Let us know, I, I help.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm dropping off some snacks, now I won't take nothing home.
I'm not gonna drop you off, I think. Well, yeah, we help.
Thank you, thank you.
I just want to say, Chief Spencer, too, that thank you for, uh, again, for looking out for our properties at Anson County Homes of Hope. You know, we, we, we integrate, we put people in neighborhoods, established neighborhoods, instead of clustering them together. And I don't think, Susan, we've ever had, uh.
There's a ghost in there.
But, uh. No, we in hot.
Yeah, your streets are not dead.
Uh, but I just wanted to say thank you, the court system does work, uh, because of the, the quick action of the Lee's for a, a police department at one of our properties recently, uh, the person is, is going through the legal process now, there've been some other issues with this person. There are some mental issues, there are behavioral issues involved. We still have to remember that these people on the street that we encounter are somebody's child. And there's, there's a mother grieving, uh, there's a father wondering where their kid is, because somebody has dropped them off in Waysborough like they are a bag of garbage. And we encounter them every day at Homes of Hope.
And we do too.
And we do too, yes. It's, it's hard to, to see these neglected folks on the street, uh, see them every day in front of our shop. We get phone calls every day at Anson County Homes of Hope for people at the hotels, uh, all types of situations. We appreciate what you do to make those lives and our lives easier and safer, thank you.
Also, October the thirtieth is the day of the vows. They having their, um, visits over at these, it's under full house, so please, y'all come out. This is really important for, um, spouses that have lost their life, that demand the vows. Sergeant Nolan had received their award one year, so she's making sure that I find a nice purple shirt. She said, "A nice purple shirt, I've been waiting," so thank y'all for that.
Miss Keir's going to be there.
It must be, somebody's unlikely to be there, and it's my birthday.
Uh, next on the agenda, uh, Public Works Director Nick Griffin.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, everything that's forward, we know is holding together right now, working on several different issues that are gonna be in the long run to repair. Uh, myself and Mr. Ross had a conversation today about our metering system. We're looking at doing some other things and trying to maintain what we have currently. Investigating several different avenues to speed that process up, it's just slow getting things in line sometimes. We opened reviews the other day for our sewer project on the east side of town. We're working on that about a hundred years, hopefully we'll break down on that, probably first of the year, I'm guessing. Works still going on with our three pump stations on the southeast side of town. All of those are being done as the equipment comes in. It's a scheduling thing, when this part comes in, they install it, and so forth and so on. So as parts come up, well, they are working towards that. We're hoping to have our largest pump station online before the end of this year. They're saying they could have it before then, before Christmas, we hope for that, before it gets into the running season. Grapple truck has been running, I know that's a hot-blooded topic, it's been running, it's fast-dicking, uh, soon, hopefully, we get started on our leaf truck. It's also, uh, down for repair, once we get it repaired, we'll start picking up leaves, goes out since that time of year.
I don't have any questions for other end. Um, we have also discussed in recent meetings of the equipment that we have ordered, um, because of the, the equipment that's down. And we've been, I personally, I'm trying to tell people, listen, we got some issues with the equipment. We've, uh, voted to, uh, to buy some other equipment, it just takes a little time.
Yes, sir.
And, and I, I echo, I'm echoing that because of the water leak that happened on our street that you all came out fixed. And then, I guess that pressure went on the older line, and then come back out and fix another one. But it just takes time, and you got to have equipment, you got to have money, money, finances to do these things.
That's right.
And so I just want to echo that those six percent, and what I said, well, that six percent tax increase we did, in order to fix some of these things, that's why we did it, so thank you.
Yes, sir. The A, the A brand, first, we addressed with the, uh, stuff of that, uh, C D B G, um, we're dealing with a very old system, uh, some of this system was put in in the fifties. It takes a while, it tends to ignore it because it's in the ground, it's outside, out of mind, it's not realized there's a problem until there's a problem. When the toilet won't flush, and the awful one come on, now we got a problem. And so trying to address those problems, make a better water system, replenish water for the citizens, for their fire protection, make insurance rates go down, there's a whole gamut of stuff that just helps, but in the end, it comes to the financing thing, though. You can't replace everything all at one time.
Thank you. And Mr. Ross, you would, you would say that, I think, the one way to find out is that call now, or when you're, you're trying to put something in place where they have a contact. It's gonna, I know it's gonna take a little work, but just kind of give them, like, give them what you think about it.
Yes, sir, we're trying to, uh, revamp our, our, um, system, how you call in water leaks and, um, situations like that. Right now, they're calling the communication center, and then they're dispatching from there, depending how serious it is, to our, our staff. So we're working on trying to revamp that, that process.
And I just like to say, thank you, because some of the people have been calling in and saying that they've been taking up the leftovers, so I want to thank you for that.
Yes.
And I want to thank you, because, um, I remember going back from the neighborhoods that was complaining about the roads. I know three neighborhoods called me, called me, and thanked me, because y'all feel, I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, it was pretty rough, fires, I know, I was at, let a funeral on my last Thursday afternoon, and learned of another death, so I left a visitation to go see that person, by the time I got back, there was a water leak, and I couldn't go to the bathroom. Um, so I know you've got your hands full today. Uh, I did one of, um, John Willoughby, what's the name, I was trying to remember, about those brick pavers for Uptown Waysborough. Um, the town has historically taken care of that, for, uh, people who have paid money to have those brick pavers engraved and installed in Uptown Waysborough, program's still going on. And we've got eleven pavers now that need to be put down, I don't want to be, uh, I'm the chairman of that organization, I don't want anybody to come to me and try to sue us, me, the town for nonperformance.
What thing organization?
Uptown Waysborough Incorporated, the one that Cory, uh, worked for, Cory, um, what's his name, Louden?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one, that is, you know the organization.
Okay, I didn't know the name of it, I thought I asked him, so, uh, how many papers are?
There are eleven pavers, the, the great brick pavers around town, that program's been going on for twenty years. And we've collected money with, from families who have, uh, paid for those, either small or large, you see them all around town. And, uh, they need to be installed. Now, if you got, if you guys can't do it, let me know, we'll find, as long as we're okay with digging up the sidewalk and putting them in, putting sand around. I've been tracking Mr. Willoughby since August, and, uh, I understand that things keep coming up, but we really would appreciate some help getting those down, so we can, a lot of them are memorials for people who are no longer with us, including, uh, some deaf and dandy sheriffs. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Maureen Mason, finance officer.
Did I hear you say it was your birthday?
It is.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
You still counting them?
I don't, it's thirty-nine years old, thirty-nine, you got the golden number, that's it, thirty-nine. I think I passed twenty-one, it's about three times over.
Okay, so, at the beginning of the meeting, we added, um, two amendments to the agenda. The first one is for general fund, um, increasing the overall budget by sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars in revenue. That will be coming from higher than expected collections. And as far as the expenses go, it is a combination of cuts and additions, um, cutting of, uh, hiring costs for the police, we overestimated quite a bit. We added the one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from the nine-one-one dispatcher contract. If you recall, that contract didn't get approved until after the budget was completed, so I didn't know what the dollar was gonna be, so. There's that, um, let's see. We added money for the trailers that you all approved, put those in the proper line items. Uh, those trailers have been purchased, are complete, registered, and in working operation. As far as the vehicles that you all approved, that is going to be for four trucks, a sewer jet, and a dump truck. And we have the quotes and the specs on the pickup trucks. We have, I believe, the quotes on the dump truck, oh, you have them now, awesome.
Three on the jet, sorry, I thought two.
Three on the jet, and how many, are we done with the dump truck?
We have two.
Okay, then we're probably ready to move on that for, um, putting it out for R F P, for the financing. So I'm going to put that in the capable hands of our new finance officer, he can, I did the first one, he gets to do the second one. Um, so that is the general fund. Do you want to approve that, or you want me to move on to the water sewer?
Do you need the motion to approve that?
Okay, do it all at once, okay. And then, the water sewer fund is for sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars, and that is, uh, pretty much change in staffing. We, uh, hired people that were approved positions but not budgeted, so, um, now we hired them. And, uh, let's see, the new Public Works Director asked for an increase in, uh, funds for training, because we have some new staff. And, um, oh, um, so the adopted budget for water sewers indirect cost of the general fund was three hundred and four thousand. That was an error. When Mr. Ross and I did the budget, we raised it to three hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. I put that in the general fund, but did not change it in the water sewer fund. So that is what that change was for. And that's it, any questions on the budget?
Need a motion to, uh, approve your budget, I mean?
Second.
All right, fair.
Okay, so, the financial report, you know, it's still early, this is a financial report as of August thirty-first. We've, um, collected two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred dollars, we've had expenditures of a million. So we have quite the operating deficit, but the money for taxes will start coming in by the end of this month, beginning of next month. Um, the expenditures for, part of the reason for the expenditures being higher was, uh, bringing staffing back up to where it needed to be, and of course, the contracted services with, uh, the county for the sheriffs for the nine-one-one contract. For water and sewer, they're sitting fine, a hundred and fifty-one thousand in the black. And for cash and investments, we have seven point eight million dollars, which is six hundred, almost six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars more than last year. Last year, we had four point one million dollars in non-interest bearing accounts, and as of August thirty-first, we have only one million dollars in non-interest bearing. In interest bearing, last year, we had two point nine five million, and this year, we have seven point, I'm sorry, six point seven million in interest bearing, uh, investment account, which is a good part of why our, um, revenue is higher, because of the interest that we earned. Does anybody have any questions?
You enjoyed your time here with us.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we got the town manager, Roger Ross.
I talked to that, um, mayor, I'm sorry, mayor pro-tenor, mayor for council, thank you. Uh, a couple of things, um, a couple of months ago, we, um, started a compensation study for our employees to look at, uh, pay equity, uh, and also to conform plan for eighty-eight standards, uh, that is complete. So we'll have reports to be next month on what those findings were, uh, for the compensation studies. The North Carolina Department of Budget and Management sent us some results relates to the population study that was done, I guess, with the census in twenty-twenty, uh, the town of Waysborough went from four thousand, nine hundred and twelve people to the date of five thousand, twenty-four people, so almost an iron and some people have, have, um, taken residence here in town of Waysborough, according to the state of North Carolina. Town Hall, um, um, project in reference to renovation is almost complete. Um, we, um, will finish the paving of the, um, driveway of the, of the drag room. Um, Diamond Electrics is the, um, um, company that is doing the, the, uh, the security and also the, uh, access control, so that's almost done. And we've gotten a lot of, um, positive feedback from the town hall. Folks are coming and saying they like the way it looks and the appearance, and, and so we're doing what we can to make it, make, uh, it good for our citizens and our customers, and also our employees as well. Last month, we had complaints about, um, from Ms. Sowell, 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 there you, I think, Sowell, yeah, Sowell, I'm sorry, Sowell. Um, she came and said that her mother's street, I want to see her, was a problem, I got it was, um, kind of our issue, actually, it was a pothole. Uh, we went in and filled that, and she called me and thanked me for, uh, our staff coming out and addressing that for pretty quickly. And we also, um, had complaints on the Garmidge Street, we fixed that as well, on two plates, on, on two places on the Garmidge Street. So that has been done. We're in the process of, thinking of all of our streets, or some of our streets are in bad condition, um, so we're trying to catch up and get some of these streets with potholes fixed. And then, um, lastly, um, I got a call in reference to Sipstan Park, um, the organization wanted to use Sipstan Park for flag football, um, um, league, and I'll let Mr. Curtis, um, be able to come and talk about that, if you would, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
For y'all that don't know me, uh, my name is Curtis Haley, I am with Brothers for Life Non-Proper Organizations. And we're having a flag football league starting this Saturday, we're having a jamboree. Richmond County has four teams, Union County has four up to nineteen, ages four to sixteen. We've been going out in communities, trying to get our kids to come out and play. A lot of them say they can't play because, they say that they can't play because, uh, they always pay on the football team, their coach don't want them to play. There's a difference when you own the team, but you don't get a chance to play.
Right.
And this is co-ed, men, young ladies and young men. Uh, we was trying to get the Anson Middle School football field, which we was told at first we could use it, and came back and told us nine hundred and thirty-two dollars to use a field.
How much?
Nine hundred and thirty-two dollars.
For how long?
Uh, just for eight, eight weekends, that's all we was asking. So that's why we asking to use Silitan Park.
That's a new practice.
And it's pre-registration. We didn't ask, we haven't asked any kid for any money. We didn't ask, we haven't asked any kid for any money. Free jerseys to play ball. But, but the high school, middle school want us charged us. And we're five oh one three, see, we're a nonprofit.
Yeah.
We have our own insurance.
Yeah.
And, um, we, we just trying to get our kids out, um, have something to do at least on the weekends. And we would like to ask the city council, police, sheriffs, come out and join us. And we're not charging it. The only thing we're charging is if you bring a bottle of water, we fine with that, just to help these kids out. It's for snacks, water, Gatorade, whatever you wanna bring, that's fine. You don't have to bring anything, because we gonna make it happen regardless.
Where's this and when? I mean, since Sippin Park, I guess we need to make a motion, but what, what?
Well, we're supposed to have a jamboree this Saturday at ten a.m.
We got a lot of stuff going on this week.
Yeah, I know, I was gonna say, I, I.
But you, you, you got a good, uh, I'm, I'm loving it and I'm, I'm thinking in the community, I'd be glad to support it. But I'm pretty sure, get these youth up, we always talking about it.
Right.
So now, financially, you need some help.
Financially, we, well, actually, what we're really trying to do is providing transportation for these kids. Because we can't go to different towns without own vehicles.
Okay.
Uh, but we are putting grants for that, uh, so.
They all in this community are, uh, you said Richmond County?
Richmond County already have their people, you can already got, they wait out at some kind of.
You just doing, you're here.
Yes, we, we need, we, yeah, we need, we would like to have transportation for the kids up here in the county that don't have transportation. And the ages are from four to sixteen. Uh, four through six to play together, uh, seven through nine, um, ten to thirteen and thirteen to sixteen.
Trying to get a place for them.
Yes, we were asking to use Sippin Park since we was gonna be charged for the middle school.
We need a motion to.
We should let him use Sippin Park, then he go for that.
We need a motion.
I'm making a motion that he'll, he'll allow to use the park.
Possession.
And then he should go for that.
I thank y'all.
All in favor?
Ah, okay. Is it a grass cut, that's what, uh?
Yeah, it's a grass cut, I want to make sure.
Grass already been cut.
Yes, it's already been cut.
Good.
Did you give the addresses to the children that don't need some transportation?
Well, well, we was hoping everyone to help us get the word out. Anderson County can ready on that day. Uh, and Richmond County, Union County is ready to go. Uh, they will probably play against each other, play for, or to, um, just so Anderson County can get together, get their teams together.
Yes.
Like I said, it's co-ed. And at the end of the season, we will have a banquet at, uh, West Deep Creek Community Center, um, where everybody can come on out and fellowship with, you know, with the kids.
This is the first I've heard of it, I'm pretty sure, let big, get, get the word out.
Yes, yes, it's been on Facebook, but I need everybody's help.
Yeah, maybe you should make a, putting the churches up in the church.
What pages is this on?
Um, brothersforlife nonprofit at Gmail. Um, but we also, the number four now is brothersforlife.
Okay.
It's, uh, brothersforlife nonprofit on Facebook also. Um, I'm quite sure I'm friends with some of you all, it's also been on my page. Uh, we're gonna put it back out there again.
Please do.
Thank you for that.
Okay, I'm sure.
Hey, let me know about it.
We still be concerned with the Gmail.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We'll have, uh, mayor and council committees start off with this joint interview.
I really don't have a, I just wanna thank him for, uh, for them picking up the screws off of the street and thank the police officer for all that they do, taking care of us because they say, y'all would beat them down, but they are on, they are there. They're there when you need them, so you better start picking them up, start beating them down. But they, he's doing, we are giving a hand, but they're doing a great job and, and. And I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Wallace, because he's doing a great job, he keep doing what he doing. And, uh, y'all, we can make Anderson County grow. We can make them lonely. You know, people talk us down, but you know, we ain't there, they, we there for that, we can't come back. Because Lord forgive, he loves them. He say if he have to reach way down, we say, he say pick you up. But we trust in God, so anything I can we put our hands, we can do.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming out. It's, it's the first meeting I feel comfortable. See, it's ticked up, so it look like we doing something. But please don't forget our babies, because they, they looking at us and we need to leave positive role models and let them know they can be doctors and lawyers. You know, the dream don't stop because we have our differences. We gotta keep, we gotta fix them, keep it moving, we supposed to lift one another up. And anything that I can help with, I don't mind rolling my sleeves up. Just ask, you'll be surprised, I'll probably be the first one out there. But thank y'all, thank y'all for giving us a chance.
My head is a tey, I'm gonna work.
That's everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for all the good that's going on in this community. Anderson County Homes Afford is going to have a, uh, Christmas dissolve at, uh, the Lockhart Taylor Center. We haven't done this in, got since before COVID. Uh, we hope to have a lot of vendors, we hope to have a lot of dependents and have a nice community fun event where we all can get together, say happy holidays and do some Christmas shopping. That's November fifteenth at Lockhart Taylor Center. We start at nine in the morning, we go to the Ford eat me or whenever. And if you're a vendor and wanna set up, you've got a community organization, church, whatever you wanna promote, um, it's a great way to get together, meet your neighbors and say hello.
And help the homeless.
And help the homeless, that's the main thing. Yeah, we'll be selling boiled peanuts again, I probably smell like those. I'm sorry, I do, we've been holding Asian peanuts. But you said you were a worker, but you weren't there today, I love you. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. It's my birthday, I've, I've got my, I've got my pastor and I'm gonna say, for sixty-four years that God has given me on this earth, the past four have been very, very satisfying, very, very humbling, and I appreciate every opportunity that you have given me to serve this community. Some of us will lament when I leave in December, some of us will celebrate. I embrace and love you all and all children of God. We're trying to do what's best for our community, our children, so thank you. To you, Mr. Parsons.
Other than Mr. Haley, there's a gentleman I wanna introduce you to, so I got your number, we'll, we'll be talking. Thank everybody for what you do.
That's right.
Uh, I just wanna personally thank, uh, public director, Nick, uh, you doing a good job. I know it's a lot of pressure on you. Uh, Calvin Dean, appreciate the good work you guys are doing, but I wanna bring something to the floor about R and R towing as a conflict of interest for the town of Wazeboro. Uh, Mr. Mills is a city county commissioner and a county employee, also has a contract with the, uh, county for towing. Uh, town of Wazeboro, I feel deemed this to be a, you know, we're gonna be a part of, uh, this type of ongoing. Uh, we wanna turn to our legal counsel for some, uh, expedience on that, good sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having a look at that, um, and I talked about this with, uh, Mr. Manager as well. Um, certainly don't have a constitutional right to be on the towing list, uh, and, and the city or town has the ability to, uh, to have a towing list that doesn't include everybody, where you can make some distinctions as to, uh, who's gonna be on that list. Typically, I would advise you make sure it's pursuant to some sort of policy or procedure, uh, so that everyone understands what your, your policy is as it relates to, uh, your towing, uh, list. But, but we are taking a look at that as well, uh, in terms of, uh, those concerns. Uh, there's not any legal concern that I've heard, because oftentimes you'll hear, you know, that there's a, there's a conflict, there's a conflict. Um, and, and I'm often at times looking for a, a legal conflict that prevents somebody from doing something I'm supposed to. Uh, this is just something that, that doesn't fit our values, uh, and that's, that's especially been happened.
So you, you need some time to look into it, or?
So I, I have looked into it, um, and I've, I've provided some advice, uh, to the manager. Uh, I'll continue to, to review that as you go, as you go forward, if you're gonna make some decisions. Um, I'd like to be able to, uh, provide some information.
So when is the legal conflict?
There, there isn't a legal conflict.
There isn't any legal conflict, it's just a policy or procedure that we want to implement to what?
That, that's been the discussion, uh, in, in terms of, you know, the, the appearance of impropriety, uh, for want of a better term, uh, which is not to say that anyone is doing something specifically wrong, but that this may be a policy that doesn't, doesn't look, or doesn't prevent the va, present the values of, of, of this.
Would that not hedge on the, uh, October title on making a published ADA?
It could be, uh, and I, and I always like to look for some sort of policy or procedure, otherwise it sounds like you're making it up. Um, and you wanna avoid, uh, not only appearance of impropriety, but also being arbitrary increases, uh, of all these.
Only the what?
Right.
Targeting someone or not giving everybody equal access? Absolutely, so that's what we need to look at. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, so just for the publics to understand, so, um, we, um, we contract with the county for towing services. So when someone calls the police and their vehicle's in an accident, there's a, there's a method, at least a list of towing company that they use. And particular towing company is on that list. And, um, um, that particular person owns that towing company, um, is a, um, county employee. City, city and county commissioner as well, he's getting a contract with the county. So, uh, we ask our legal, um, we think it's our attorney to, to take a look at it, because we are paying them to do services for the town, it's taxpayer dollar, right?
How do they dispatch for somebody to tell them?
Uh, it is a rotation, so the list of, so there's five. Just, so if, if it's five people on the list.
Like around Robin for real estate?
Yeah, so like, for instance, Ross Towing, myself have a towing company. This is my week that they will call, then the next week, they will call Baker Towing. Then after that, they will call Snug Towing. Each week, it, it goes to a road to a different person for that week.
We can't do that ourselves?
No, so that, that service is offered by the county, because we, we contract with them through dispatch services.
So this is saying they was, uh, office special, when they were done cleaning, they said it was done fifty inches?
Absolutely, that's correct. Could I get a motion on that?
Well, I make a motion, if he looking into, if it's not right, then he should do.
Well, he's been directed.
It's already, we don't make a motion. That makes me, that would be a verb.
Well, y'all want a motion that he be removed from the list?
I do.
Okay, well, I make a motion, he be removed from the list.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Ah, not without further legal, not without further direction. I'm, I'm, without, I'm pretty with you, I'm against about everything you got. I'm, it's three votes for, they'll pass.
Thank you.
And I, I will still provide the council.
Please stay there. That, uh, jerk, we gonna have to go in a closed session at this time, one over.
We need to establish qualification, competent performance, conditions of appointment of a public officer or employee of a prospective public officer.
Here in Wazeboro. Thank you, officer. Thank you.